Called the City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. So, we're going to talk a little.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Jim Reifel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Sutter.
Here.
Dale Nelson.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Mers.
How's it?
Brian Larson.
As a term of quorum, number one, discussion on Rockhampton North special event. Justin here.
Yes.
Dave, you want to start with your name or do you want to just have him get into it? Just make sure that you're.
Talking close enough.
Yeah, and that it's.
Yeah, I think we're on. Yep, yep. Um, yeah, so myself and then we have a committee that we formed now, so Mike Bushey's here with me. We're basically here, I had gotten some correspondence from Megan a few months back, just talking about some city utilities that do go along with with the festival and in the years past, the city has essentially donated those services to us in order to help help the event function. Um, you know, this year, we we scaled back a day. We found that three days maybe was a little too long last year. Uh, I think two is kind of the the perfect, um, perfect amount. And we also expanded on a partnership with the Downtown Development Association to create a new campaign called Two Cities One Weekend that we are marketing as one entity on two separate events on the weekend, the nineteenth and twentieth. So we're hoping that we can, we can kind of grow that, that reach further out into the region to attract people that might be considering coming to town either side of the river, um, to kind of focus on that weekend with the street there and with with Rockhampton North. So, um, you know, we've gotten some, some bigger ideas that we have going and getting back when we, when Megan had let me know about the city charges, it was kind of a unpredicted, um, expense that that would be coming up from what we had planned this year. So I'd had some conversation with her and I just figured that we'd come before you guys and essentially just ask that, you know, in the years past, we've kind of just considered it a little bit of a partnership between the city and the festival. Um, and we were just hoping that the council would be able to continue that partnership in that way, um, to help contribute to the festival on alleviating some of those costs. Obviously, it's, you know, if if everything's a runaway success in a, in a perfect situation, you never have to worry about too much, but, um, where we still sit in, in the stage of, of the festival, it's still touch and go every single year. So every dollar that, that goes out, um, we have to account for pretty, pretty close in advance and in hoping that we get the attendance that, that we, we need, I guess. Um, so pretty much that being said, you know, between the police, um, presence on site for the day of and then the water and light, obviously, we need to talk with the Water and Light Commission about that, but we were just hoping that the city, um, could kind of continue that unspoken, uh, partnership we've kind of had the last few years on helping provide those services so we can, uh, continue, continuing to grow, I guess, the event, so.
I'd like to note, it also helps, uh, like having the police presence there, really cut back on any underage drinking, the intimidation of it or anything like that. We police very well inside, but just having that presence there and then the firefighters on site, that stuff is, it's crucial to us maintaining safety around there, too. And, uh, profit margins are really tight this year and we were kind of on the fence of even, do we do it? Do we not do it? So, I mean, this would help us greatly to have your guys' support on that end of it with them.
Well, the only thing I say is, so, um, yeah, Water and Light is, as you know, their own entity on, on that aspect of it and they'll look at that, but particularly what we're looking for here is the police department and the setup for the barricades, um, the time for the Public Works people to bring it in and drop it off. And I don't know that we have a full estimate, I think, of what, what those costs would be yet, because I think typically, um, you know, remember in the past, you guys have worked with the police department to kind of determine how many officers would be needed and what, what time like that. So I guess I, correct me if I'm wrong, either the police department or Public Works, I don't know that we haven't really set them out yet at this point, do we? Okay. So, but those costs would still be determined.
I do have overtime sign-up sheet already, trying to plan ahead for this event and I'm planning for four officers for each night.
And I think, Mike, you were talking about possibly getting together two on some timing of it, um, because I know that we are adding, um, more of our own security on staff, um, based off of kind of what we had last year, but then we're also scaling it a little bit different, too, because we noticed there's been a certain timeframe where you start to see the majority of people show up and we always thought that'd be a little earlier, but last year, all three days proved that it was going to be closer to, uh, the headlining act before you really saw that influx of, of attendance wave kind of push into the, to the ground. So we're going to adjust and we're going to scale up the amount of bodies that we have for security. We're just going to adjust when they come to the, the event itself, so.
We're somewhat limited by union contract.
Gotcha.
But, you know, I can also look at that to a degree.
Sure.
No, that's all I had, is just that we don't, we don't exactly what the cost will be yet, but.
Any other questions for Justin?
Here.
I know, um, we did take a look at the event coming out of last year as a way of maybe not doing quite so much from the city side.
Sure.
And, um, I know when we were there at the event, Chief, you were feeling a little bit understaffed at that event, if I remember correctly.
Well, it was, the, the event timing was very poor for our department last year.
Yeah.
Officer getting married that weekend, a variety of factors, the staff that we had available was extremely limited, so.
Correct.
We want to basically work in it with no more than three and usually only two officers on, and that was not enough people for the, for the level of crowd there was.
You didn't take a lot of assurance from my presence there? Just kidding, just kidding.
Of course I did.
So, um, so, you know, maybe there is some room in between, we'll, we'll probably staff it up a little more, just so the chief in his gut feels like, you know what, if something would start to happen, we're good.
True.
You know, that, that, the, the gut level, uh, understanding of a, of a trained police officer, I really have a lot of trust in him. Like, if this started to go sideways, what would we do and could we keep a lid on it? That's important to me, that you have that, that measure of comfort. And, um, then the, the folks in attendance can have a blast.
Right.
You know, if they, if they're safe and secure and those things are all well thought out and planned for, now we can have a good event. And yet, we also see that it's a community benefit, right? What you do, it spins off as a benefit to everybody. We get that. And so maybe when we get the numbers a little closer from Public Works and Police, um, we can come back together again and.
Sure.
And find some common ground in between, you know, instead of maybe the full fee or the very low fee, maybe there is some room to work inside of there. I'd be very, very willing to look at that.
Sure. And, and, you know, one of the other, I guess, one of the main reasons why we did decide to come and ask for it, um, the CBB has been a big supporter of the event, too, um, and our budget for that got drastically cut this year, um, just with the funding that they were running into. So, um, between the DDA and us, uh, we, we took what we did get from them and that's now going to a complete marketing budget, but, um, we kept the same talent level with two days as we had for three and kind of got less money this year now. So it's one of those where it just, it's, it's anytime you do any of these things, especially out in the elements, there's so many outside factors that you're just praying go the right way. Um, you know, it's a gamble. At the end of the day, it's a gamble and then we've been willing to take it and we're going to continue to, to take it, but, um, you know, we're just, we're operating with, with the mindset that at least one of the days goes off swimmingly and if not both, to, to make it a runaway success so we can continue to grow, but we're always realistically one bad day away from not being able to do it anymore. So you just kind of hope it continues in the right direction.
Um, we do ask for one thing in return, if we're going to consider any sort of compromise on the cost factor, that all applications are in the day before they're due.
I think we've been pretty good this year. We'll have to run it by Megan, but I think we're on top of everything this year.
You pull off an amazing event and yet I know on the other side of it, the organizational part is a big challenge.
Right.
But we love what you bring, we love what it brings to our community and, uh, we want to work with you.
And we can make a deal there for sure.
Having the committee really helps us get that. We meet.
Yeah.
Every month and, and kind of iron them things out.
And that is one thing that we, we definitely saw last year coming to this. I mean, it's a year-long planning process, it starts the day after it ends, um, but there was definitely a need to expand the amount of people that were involved because it just, it gets to be way too much.
Yeah. Plus running your business and all the else.
Right.
Yep, cool. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple things. Um, one thing I'll let everybody know, it wasn't just you that we looked at this, this was everything that we do in the city.
Sure.
Any event.
Sure.
Because we were talking with our Public Works, our police, Water and Light, you know, whoever, what department is involved in any event.
Sure.
And the cost that, for us, for overtime, for Public Works to go put stuff out, we have to pay man-hours, Police Department, we're doing overtime. So it wasn't just your event that we stepped back and take a look at all these things.
Mm-hmm.
It was everything that happens within the city. So I want everybody to know that is.
Sure.
Because.
Right. And obviously, I mean, we knew that this was probably the biggest one around, so obviously it was a driving factor, but yeah, I definitely knew that was, it was widespread, so.
Okay. Any others have anything?
Yeah. Just one thing for Chief, is there any, say you end up with low numbers, again, nobody is biting on the overtime, is there opportunities with the, I know they're already understaffed, but Sheriff's Department or, or the troopers or something, or, and I know it's way out there, but is offer to Grand Forks PD, I don't know if that's, I know there's jurisdictional issues, but.
Yeah.
I mean, there's reciprocity stuff that we already have, so I don't know if for something like this, could you do that?
Sheriff's Department would be my first choice if we were to come to that. As of right now, I have three officers signed up to work Friday night and four for Saturday.
Okay.
So we're sitting in pretty good shape right now.
Okay.
Um, last year, I worked every night. I'm, I'm not available this, this year, um, but I'm.
Look out then, because that intimidation factor is on the window.
But I'm not available for free, so if it's going to be working, it's going to have to. So, um, that's, that's one issue. And, and the problem with, I guess that was, that was one of the reasons I was pushing to try to get some rain protection for the city and the off chance we did have to go outside in contract with another agency would probably be the Sheriff's Department. I would assume we could get at least one or two people from them if need be, um, but they would expect to be paid by somebody. And if that's going to come, you know, if we're paying another agency, then, you know, no offense to Justin or the staff, I, I fully approve of the event, I want it to continue. I, I've gone and enjoyed it, I think every year they've had it. Um, when I worked last year, but even before that, I went as, as a customer. Um, it's a good event, I want to see it continue, but it, it is an expense.
Yep, no, absolutely. And I guess, I was just wondering on the staffing, but obviously it sounds like.
We're in pretty good shape right now.
Okay. Um, if it was like an off-year low, is Grand Forks an option with something like that or is it not?
Probably not, for a situation like this, I think it would probably be conceivably crooked, but the Sheriff's Department would be no issue because we're within their jurisdiction anyway. So it'd be just a matter of, of just contracting and figuring out who's going to pay them.
Right. And then another question, you kind of touched on with CBB, you know, looking for other sources, like is there anything within our economic development that is an option to offset this or anything with, you know, the, I don't even remember what it's called anymore, but the, you know, the, our congressional money that we got for COVID relief, I don't know if there's anything that ticks that box, you know, if they're looking for stuff. I guess, I'd, I'd look around and see, ask, you know, different, I guess, economic development, I don't see.
No, he's, he's, he's out.
But I would say maybe just take a look and see if there's anything that we have that would be, that we could use to offset some dollars, whatever, you know.
And number, number-wise, too, just for Mike's sake, um, it would probably be no more than what we had for Black Hawk three years ago. Um, realistically, we're, we're capping ticket sales at four thousand and then for that Black Hawk show, I think we were right around that thirty-five, thirty-six hundred is what attended that one. Um, so those numbers, you're not going to see much more than, than what we saw for that, so.
I think Garth Brooks will bring in more than four.
He sure would, but I'm going to have to ask for a heck of a lot more.
What was your top, um, attendance set last year at the highest peak number roughly?
I, I believe it would have been Saturday and it was probably in that twenty-seven-hundred range.
Yeah, it looked like it could have handled a little more. They were tight to the stage and some in the back, but in the middle, there was room for a thousand more or whatever.
Right. And then, then just, you know, based off of square footage, um, we figure that near four thousand, you're probably getting about as tight as you're possibly going to get there, so.
Looks, that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
So what, what it looked like with that number?
Sure. Yep.
Any others have anything? Nothing?
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Another one, another request for a basketball court in, at Danmore Park. We have Ben and Zach.
Reed, you want to start off? Explain it or do you want to?
Yeah, I can start. No, I certainly can, personally. Um, I'll just go through it.
We should really get a table there.
All right. Thanks, Mr. President, council members. Um, Ben and Zach are here, they're residents that live in the area of Danmore Park. Uh, they came forward last fall to me with a request to consider if we would put in a, a half-court sized outdoor basketball court in the Danmore Park. Well, technically, let me go back, somewhere on the west side of Bigland Road, south end of East Grand Forks, that was the, that was the initial request. It wasn't specifically Danmore Park, it was that end. Through some discussion with, with Zach and Ben and our Park and Rec Commission members, we looked at the couple of park properties we have in that area of town. Um, basically, it's Danmore Park or Greenway Park on Greenway Boulevard are the two that we looked at closely. Uh, and ultimately, just through conversation with those people, thought that Danmore was the more appropriate place to start this conversation about where a park would go. One of the big reasons for that is there's room for it there. Uh, and two, the, the green space that's at the park on Greenway Boulevard, um, has a really natural fit and use all summer, all year long for kickball, softball, flag football, you name it. It's a little bit bigger of a green space in that area. In the winter months, the residents that live around there, of course, have started to put an outdoor rink in that park in the winter, too. Um, so that's what led us to look at Danmore Park. Uh, through the Park and Rec Commission, our discussion, we sent out a survey to residents on that end of town, asking for their thoughts. Basically, everybody that lived within about a block of Morgan Place where Danmore Park is located got a, a letter in the mail from the Park and Rec Department and asked them to do a survey. Um, so the responses to those surveys that we got are included in here. Um, and, uh, we didn't really set, when we started the survey process, didn't necessarily set a specific rule or parameter on that we needed a hundred percent of the people in the neighborhood to be in favor of it to move forward or that we needed majority or anything of the nature. We just said, let's just send out the survey and see what the input is and, and go from there. So that's what's led us to, to now is just, uh, we talked about at the Park and Rec Commission, think it's a, a good project, it's not a budgeted project in two thousand twenty-two. Um, in the RCA, I mentioned that there potentially could be funds through the Altru partnership that we get that could be used if you guys all felt that that was appropriate. Uh, and then really just wanted to get Zach and Ben to have an opportunity to come and talk with you all about it as well, to see which direction you feel like the council as a community, we should go here. So, uh, with that, I think I'll let you guys go.
Thank you. Thank you, Reed.
Yeah, um, so Zach, I think lined up a couple of donations from some of the local businesses to help offset some of the costs of the park as well. Um, and then we wanted to discuss any of the concerns that, um, others in the neighborhood might have with the park. Um, and then, um, we also brought some from our neighborhood that are also in favor of, of the, the court as well. Um, so.
One thing I just want to add, like Reed mentioned there, the intent of the court isn't to have, um, we kind of sized it accordingly to have a hoop there, smaller, so it's, it's a kid going out, shoot hoops, um, play, the way that a lot of city streets are designed nowadays, driveways are like this, putting a hoop in your driveway isn't as feasible as it once was. Um, balls roll at the street, traffic up and down the street, um, a little dangerous issue. This way, this opportunity provides a location for not only kids to shoot baskets at this spot, but I have a three-year-old or a four-year-old daughter that would love to ride her scooter around this, this area. Pickleball is getting more and more popular, you could put a temporary pickleball net across at times, play foursquare, whatever. It, it's a multipurpose surface in my mind to be utilized by a lot of kids in different ages. Um, as our boys get a little older, Ben and I both have a little older boys, too, as well, they're getting into more where they can shoot the baskets and, and entertain themselves that way as well. Um, yeah. And I don't, we don't see a lot of opportunities for basketball hoops at local parks and, and so that's why I approached Reed here last fall, um, to see that potential for something like this.
Yeah, there's, there's no basketball court on our side of Bigland Road either. Um, right now, uh, Nolan down there would have to go to the middle school, which is across Bigland Road and six or seven blocks away from her house if he wanted to play basketball. Otherwise, I think the closest option is the VFW. Um, so, and both of those are on the opposite side of Bigland, um, and quite a ways away. Uh, so the, Danmore Park is kind of centrally located in the area, so I think it would be a, a good option, um, for that and, and, uh, we kind of police the park ourselves, we make sure that, uh, if the kids are misbehaving on the, on the playground equipment, we're quick to action to hop out there and make sure things are going, going the right way instead of going south, so.
A lot of young families around the area, we try to, we respect each other's kids and, and all, we, we want to keep it nice for our kids, you know, and the other families in the area, so. I know even Justin, who was just presenting, has a kid a couple of blocks down the, him and his wife, wife walked down with their son and played at this park, you know, it, it does attract a few blocks in each, in each area, so it does, does draw. It's been improved here a couple of years ago, they added the swings and the benches, um, as well, so. Any questions we, concerns we'd definitely be open to discuss?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, first off, full disclosure, if we're looking at the layout of the court, the top of the page, that's my backyard. Uh, to the left of the court is the neighbor behind me, that's his front yard. Uh, looking, looking out of his, sitting on his porch, he would be looking directly at that basketball court. I have to tell you, I'm opposed to it. The neighbor right to my right, I guess, that's his backyard also, he's opposed to it. Um, my wife would tell you that she spends all day listening to the, the voices of middle schoolers and she doesn't want to spend the night listening to voices of middle schoolers. Um, University Park used to have basketball courts, they had so much problems with them that they took them out. And I, I get that you do police it because the, the parks up there, that's there now, does get used by a lot of younger individuals, but now if you've got high schoolers or middle schoolers that aren't from our neighborhood that are there using it, the language may not be the language that you want your kids that are using the other facilities in that park wanting to hear. There may be even some late nights, because basketball courts, with my experience, the older ones that are using them, they've also got the cooler sitting out. And it's a residential neighborhood, like I say, our, our front yards, our backyards are all right there. I don't think that you're going to want to be the ones going over and saying, hey, you guys are getting a little loud at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night. I guess I don't think that this is an appropriate place for a basketball court. Reed, I, I talked to you about, two weeks ago, about, uh, putting in an archery range. I think the twenty thousand dollars that we, we would spend on this would be better use in putting in an archery range in town and would get used by more of the, the citizens in our town than this neighborhood basketball court and probably have less problems with it than a neighborhood basketball court would have, so I'm opposed to it.
Well, right now, there's a park there, so there's kids in the park and you live right there. Person that lives next to you, there's a park already there. Person that's across the street from you, there's a park already there. So it's not like we're adding a park to your backyard, we're not adding a park to the neighborhood.
No.
We're enhancing what's there, we're not enhance additionally asking you, as you built your house there and not knowing there was going to be a park there, it's already parked there with kids running around playing. I'm sure there's probably kids that are probably middle school or high school kids that sit around there, too. So I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a great thing. Um, I mean, I mean, the comment that was made here about skating rink would be, would be great, well, they're going to be out there shooting pucks against the boards. I live close to people who have skate rinks and you can hear them all the time at night. So it's not like, that's not going to be amazing, but I think adding and enhancing the parks we have now is what we should be doing. So that's my opinion there.
And just in response, the, the age of individuals that are using the park now aren't going to be the age of the kids that are using the basketball court.
I think.
There's different problems.
I don't think, uh, a half-court in a pocket park is an ideal situation or an ideal spot for the types of, um, groups that you're talking about. I don't think they're going to go there. I think they're going to go to the VFW or they're going to go to the middle school where there's a lot less of a neighborhood there. Um, like the middle school, there's, there's no houses out there and it's a full court. Um, and it's right next to a parking lot where they can all park. Um, so in my mind, I see all those, all those kids going to play at the middle school versus coming and playing at a half-court. Um, and, yeah, the, the hockey rink, the hockey pucks are, that's a good call-out. Um, like the, the guy that's right next to it, he's got a big window that faces that park. I'd hate for a hockey puck to go through his window.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Chief Headland, for the basketball courts that we have, I was thinking of the one by the VFW arena. Um, there are other basketball courts here and there that are outside. Um, how many times do you remember having police calls to those areas for unruly kids getting crazy on the basketball court?
It's not common, but I court the way I have the most problems with is in New Heights.
New Heights. Not much at the VFW or others that you know of?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, to be honest, um, before I moved to the neighborhood, I had no idea there were so many parks on the south end of East Grand Forks. Um, and I've lived in East Grand Forks my whole life, except for a year and a half. Um, and as a high school student, I, I didn't know that park was there and it was there when I was going to high school.
Yeah.
So.
I, for my two cents worth, if it could happen, I'd sure appreciate it, I'd favor it. Um, looking for some more utilization of our green spaces, you know, to draw the young kids out, get them away from their screens, get them off the couch, get their bodies moving. And if this invites them out to, to shoot hoops and, you know, that half-court thing, um, pig and horse and all that stuff and go back and tag up and come back, sounds good to me.
When we, and Reed and I did discuss about the lock, the late night you mentioned, Mr. Vedder, um, there is no light, we don't want a light here because we agree, it shouldn't be played at late at night.
Yep.
So that'll help discourage that, we felt.
Yeah, the park's very dimly lit at night, so.
Mr. Reifel?
This is real similar to a court that was installed by my son's house where he lives and, uh, it's utilized mainly, I've seen, anywhere from the ten-year-olds on down because of the playground equipment there. And it's, it's more, again, they take their little scooters and ride around it and the basketball, it's used, uh, by maybe the ten-year-olds, but the little ones still have some use for the park, too. So, yeah, I, I don't think we're going to see the high school kids because they'd have to park and there's a lot of eyes in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's too many eyes for them to do what they might want to do.
I, um, I also have a ring camera that points right at the park, so it's right on the face of my garage, so. If there's any damage or anything that happens, we'd get them on camera.
Any others have anything?
Mr. President, just if I may, just to, to add a little to the commentary on it, um, at our Park and Rec Commission meeting, when we talked about, we, we tried to have a really healthy discussion about pros and cons of this, recognizing how it's nestled in and such that it's, it's a neighborhood park, a pocket park, a good way to describe it. One of the things that, that I mentioned to the Park and Rec Commission that I think is still worthy of our thought in this is if we want to see this court move forward and say it does move forward, I, I think it would be good of us as a Park and Rec Department citywide to make a good faith effort for this, this court to be successful the way we intend it to be, to further invest in our courts in other parts of town as to further invest in our courts in other parts of town as well. And as we talked about right now, the only one that's in Park and Rec jurisdiction is at the VFW arena. There's New Heights and at the middle school, the school properties have full-size outdoor courts, a couple of them each place. But the VFW arena is one that we have that, you know, you drive by right now and look at it, those hoops are leaning in a little bit. It hasn't had money invested in years into it. And so that's something I'd want to plan for in future budgets rather than do it right now along with this one. But I think, I would say that, at least as I view it from my perspective, that'd be the next step to this, is let's put this court in. If we're going to go that way, then let's take the next step and invest in the other courts. And if, I'm thinking the same thing in my teenage mind, I'm thinking if there's a new improved full-size court at the VFW arena, there's one at South Point Elementary Middle School, and there's one in New Heights, there's one in all three segments of our community essentially, that's a full size, that has a parking lot, that hopefully will attract that, you know, upper teenage population of our community to use rather than this little neighborhood park. So that would be my offer to try to make sure we do this right for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much money do we have in our Ocho account or fund?
I think in our current balance, I looked this up when we did the bike share program. I want to say, don't quote me exact to the dollar, but right around $160,000 in our existing balance.
Is there more?
And then we still have, every September is when we get the payment, and we have five years, four years, four payments left to receive at $45,000 a year. So there's still good money coming into that. The only extra note on that is recall that one of the initial investments with that was indoor turf at one of our arenas, and we've continued to wait to do that, hoping we get an answer on what the future of our arenas looks like.
What's the cost of that again?
About $125,000, last time I priced it out for new turf.
Oh, what's it cost? When we resurfaced the tennis court at the VFW for the pickleball, what was the cost of that?
All in, including some new fencing we had done, we spent about $40,000.
Is that a viable surface? I was just, I got to use the pickleball courts this weekend and loved it. Fantastic facility, and we should go and use it. Just wondering if that is a type of a surface that would be good for the VFW? Like if we could overlay what we've got there with that? I think just, you know, there's one thing to put the color, I'm sorry to get away from your project, but if, there's one thing to have the concrete there, but you add the color, you add the durable, it's a little bit softer, more forgiving surface, is that something that, you know, we could price out and figure out? To your point about upgrading the VFW, like, that would be the thing that brings people there too, is upgrading, you know, rims and stuff.
Yes, that would be a good surface for it. It'd probably cost a little more initially because we'd want to do some sort of an overlay to flatten and make sure all the cracks are filled. We didn't have as many cracks to deal with on the tennis courts. But certainly, it's an application that's exactly what that company specializes in, is bringing those courts back to life.
Yeah, I think we should look at both projects, honestly. I think they go hand in hand together. I think, you know, it's, we want to use the facilities we have to the fullest. We want multi-generational, we want multi-use, multi-purpose, multi, you know, multi-seasoned. You know, I think the more that we can do with the stuff that we have, the better. Like I said, I think bring us a proposal with both of them on there, and let's do it.
Take a leave of water.
What?
Tell you the top of the water park.
Oh, we should have done that. Ten years. Two of them.
Do we want to tell these gentlemen what's to follow out of this? Sorry, bro.
Jeez. Still thinks it's part of the process. Thought we told them that last year.
Process of this, what we're taking, because I'm assuming you've got a bid court, but you have to go through design and stuff like that, so what is that process?
Yeah, so this estimate that's included in the RCA is from last fall. So we certainly need to get that updated as it relates to the Danmore Court. I'll get in touch with the people that worked on the tennis courts and have them come up and get an estimate. That'll probably take longer to do than to get this quote updated. But yeah, I'm sure just a few weeks to be able to get all that done, and then we can bring it back for, bring it back.
Sure.
Yep.
So it'll be moved on to the meeting next week?
He didn't bring back.
Oh, he's going to come back.
Yeah, give me a few weeks to bring back cost.
Gotcha.
Continue to work with Reed. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Move on to the Hawk system, to Mr. Emery.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. Huh?
Bear of good news.
Yeah. So we're in the early phases of design here for the Hawk system at Bigland and 13th. What we're finding out is the signal poles for mounting Hawk system heads or whatever have a lead time of about five to six months. You know, and that's once, basically, we have a contractor on board, we've gone through the shop drawing process, it's five to six months from that time. So really, I guess the intent tonight, you know, just wanted to kind of give you an update. And based on, you know, that information too, I did kind of just lay out a proposed project schedule. So, you know, we finish our design June, July, next month or two. We do have to go through MINDOT Plan Review because we are going to use state aid funds for this project. And then looking, probably September, we would advertise for bids. October, we would, you know, open bids, hopefully award a contract. And then, you know, basically, November timeframe, you know, is when we would be reviewing any submittals, getting those approved, and the contractor places an order about November so that we have everything in place, you know, to start construction June 1 of next year or whenever school gets out. So again, I think the intent of, you know, really tonight was just kind of to give you an update. I mean, I know there was some that I think were hopefully optimistic that, you know, we could get this thing in place by the start of this school year, but just do not see that at this point, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on to Megan, information on upcoming 2022 election cycle.
Okay, we'll keep this short. There's been lots of talk about elections for various reasons, especially with Grand Forks having elections today or North Dakota having elections today. So I just wanted to bring a few things to your attention. The city primary election will be on Tuesday, August 9. The general election will be on Tuesday, November 8. On the ballot for November 8, we will have the positions of Ward 2, Ward 4, and at-large. The filing for those positions will be August 2 through August 16. Ward 1 will not be included because at the time of filing for, filing for the positions, there will not be a vacancy in that position. I know Mr. Vedder had talked about he's going to be running for Ward 2, but he will still be in the Ward 1 position. So if he is elected to Ward 2, that vacancy would not occur until he takes the position in January. So after review with the Secretary of State and basing it off of our city charter, that would be the process that we would follow. And therefore, the council would have to appoint, if Mr. Vedder is successful in Ward 2, the council would then appoint somebody to complete his term for Ward 1, which would be two more years. Okay, any questions on that?
So that'd be a four-year?
Nope, it would just be a two-year. Okay. We will have absentee voting available here at City Hall. It starts 46 days before each election. So for the primary, we'll start June 24 through the Monday before the election day. For the general election, we'll have absentee voting starting September 23. Voters that want to be on the roster for Election Day for the primary should do so. They should register. They can do it online, they can mail it in, they can come in, get a form, I can fax it over to the county. So there's multiple ways to do it. But if they want to be on the roster for the primary election, they need to have their registration completed by July 19. For the general election, registration would need to be completed by October 18. And as always, people can register on Election Day. If they're not already on the roster, they can, you know, bring the correct documentation. We can get people registered day of. Just an FYI, political signs can be posted starting January 24, and they can remain up until November 18. The county will be sending out little postcards to everyone. Since we've had some ward changes and polling place changes, anyone who is affected will be getting a little postcard sent out from the county. I do believe that should be going out next week or after next week. The person who is going to do it, she'll be back, so. And then we'll also start posting stuff on the city website and trying to get information out to people so they know where their polling places are. And I'll be putting links on our main page on the city website and also working with Cory to get it on the Facebook page so people can check, see if they are registered, if they need to get registered, any questions they may have, all that kind of stuff. So just kind of a quick overview. Do you guys have any questions?
How are you doing on judges?
Really good, actually, at the moment. We appointed judges at the last week's meeting. They should be getting, I'm going to be emailing everybody, they'll be doing, completing their online training between now and the end of July. But yeah, we appointed quite a few, so I have, I have people to work Ward, or the polling places, and I have alternates in case something happens. But if anyone's ever interested, they can always give the office a call and, or send me an email because I'm always taking names.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Number five, UTV ATV, special use vehicle discussion.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'll go through a little bit, you know, what we found going through the regulations regarding this, the ATVs, UTVs, and special use vehicles, and kind of what we found. And then I'll get back to kind of what it seems like the question or the concern is, and maybe what we can do about that. So the interesting thing to find out about that is when you look at there, so the ATV portion of it is more, I guess, along the lines of like a classic four-wheeler, you know, that you would ride around there. And that's, they are to be only utilized in city streets by permit as well. It doesn't out and out say it, but the way the, this particular code is written for the ATVs, it appears that it was written in with the idea that these ATVs would be used more for business purposes, meaning like lawn care places, those types of things where more like a business would be utilizing it and needing it to go from place to place. And so that they would need to be permitted through the police department, and that they would be a motorized flotation tired vehicle with low-pressure tires that is limited to engine displacement of 800 cubic centimeters and a total dry weight of less than 600 pounds. And they were to only be utilized on, if they were permitted to be on city streets, only from sunrise to sunset and not during inclement weather or times of low visibility. The more interesting portion is the special use vehicles, which is specifically described as more like the golf carts. So the definition of a special use vehicle is any motorized golf cart for passenger conveyance being driven with four wheels with four low-pressure tires that is limited in engine displacement of less than 800 cubic centimeters and a total dry weight of less than 800 pounds. And that can be driven on the streets with a permit. And so 77.03 under the permit section states, "Authorization to operate a special use vehicle on city streets is by permit only." And here's the, permits shall be issued by the police chief only to physically disabled persons as defined by Minnesota Statute 169.345, who have supplied the information required by this statute in the application. So typically, golf carts are not to be driven on the streets unless it's by permit, and the permit would be for somebody who is disabled and has mobility issues rather than just for them driving around. And both of those, that's a good point, both of those for the ATVs and the golf carts, both require that the applicant hold a valid driver's license, meaning here in the state of Minnesota, it'd be 16, and that they be listed on the permit. The AT, excuse me, the UTVs are a different entity altogether. That's the most recent one that we went to. Those are, because that's more of a recent development, they didn't have the UTVs back when the golf cart and the ATV ones were passed here at the city. And those are treated more like, even by the state of Minnesota, more like little cars because they have turn signals, they have headlights, they have brake lights, they have all the other amenities that make it more like an actual vehicle on the road. So those are allowed, those are probably the ones that are the most open. They're allowed on the road by permit as well. So far, I think it's stated in there, we've had 54, I think in 2021, and 31 or 30-something like that so far in 2022. And those permits are good for three years. And those get to be driven in any type of weather, however, they are restricted on a few different places where they can go, certain state highways and here through town that they're not supposed to be on. So with that being said, so really, the way our codes are written, ATVs and golf carts really should not be on the road except for very, very specific criteria. Also, and they, that none of them should be driven by anybody that's not licensed or under the age of 16. So and that, from what I gathered from last week and in some of the discussions, that appears to be more of the issue is that we are starting to see more underage people driving these vehicles and not following the posted speed limits, not following traffic rules, those types of things. So I do apologize, I know Chief Headland was out of the office last week, so I did work with some of the sergeants and particularly Lieutenant Highcheck on this. So one of the things that was talked about is they, they did put out that press release, and I'm sure you guys have noticed that, but there's the press release saying that as we have gotten complaints and that that is an issue with the rules are. There was also some discussion about when pulling some of these vehicles over and what can be done with them legally. So if they are underage drivers, you could impound the vehicle and tow it to the impound lot, then the parents would have to come and pay for the towing fee, pay for the impound fee to get the vehicle back. They could also cite the drivers as well. So I guess that's the discussion I'm looking for tonight. Is that kind of an option or is that the direction we'd like to go, is to start stepping up the enforcement? Again, I apologize, I did not get a chance to talk to you about this, but I did get the feeling from the sergeants and from the lieutenant there that the police department did not have any qualms about going out and enforcing this.
Absolutely no problem. I did see our Facebook post that the department did that was, got a lot of attention. I don't know if you folks had the occasion to see that, but that definitely got a number of comments, so I was able to review that. So I hadn't seen the agenda until today when I got into the office, but I was definitely aware that there was a discussion going on, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess as this process unfolded, and I guess through now, I remain in favor of allowing the UTVs that are street legal, have the, you know, seat belts, you know, the safety equipment, the lights, the, all that stuff that is required and that are permitted to use the streets. I think, I mean, there's cars now that are probably less safe than some of those, some of those small cars that are out there. I think it's perfectly fine for drivers that are licensed, permitted, and that have a safe vehicle to use that. But I think, I know Mr. Vedder kind of brought this up because of, and it's a lot of anecdotal stuff is what we've seen, what we've heard going on, is that by doing that, it's somehow been like, okay, now it's open, open, free rein on anything, anything and everything goes. I know there's been, you know, like the things that golf carts that are running around, running up and down levees, you know, with kids in them, and ATVs coming into town that have kids in them. And, you know, my biggest thing is I don't, I don't want a golf cart to roll over on a levee and kill some kid. I would imagine their parents don't want that either. So I don't know. I think, I think obviously, it's the same as we've dealt with in the past with people walking on the dikes and stuff. It needs to become a point of emphasis. You only have so many officers to go around, obviously. But it needs to be a point of emphasis. I wonder if there's, and this is maybe a question for Mr. Gallstead, is, is there additional penalties or can we come up with a different penalty structure other than just saying, reverting to the state, you know, penalty structure, you know, for a misdemeanor? Like, can you say it's an automatic $500? Like, can you say it's, it's an automatic $500 fine for a kid that's driving, an unlicensed kid that's driving a golf cart on a city street, and an additional $500 for every kid that's in there? You know, I, I mean, unless the penalties are, are, are going to hurt, like, I don't think a hundred-dollar fine is going to stop it, I don't, I really don't. I think if you can afford to have a golf cart run with a bunch of kids in town, I don't think it's going to stop it. I think it's got to be expensive, I think it's got to be difficult, like you said, impound the, pound the vehicle, and make it, make it a chore. If it's on a Friday and you don't get it out till Monday, then too bad, you know, I don't know. Like I said, I, I think, my general philosophy is give people the freedom to do what's right, and when they abuse that freedom, penalize them pretty harshly because they're the problem. And I don't know, like I said, Mr. Gallstead, maybe you'll shed some light on what other penalties are available, if any. But yeah, I, it does, I've seen golf carts whip around the corner, and cars come flying and slowing down after them, and with five kids on them, or whatever, so. And my biggest thing is the safety, I mean, I'm all for having fun too, but it just, it can't happen.
Mr. Johnson?
Chief Headland, I don't know who does your Facebook, they do an excellent job.
Thank you.
And I think maybe that's how the way to communicate with its younger generation, or always.
We have several officers that are involved with that.
Yep, well, you bet, keep it up.
Mayor?
Just a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, if there would be a way, and you would know better than I, like, if you have kids doing foolish things on bicycles, can you get a name and maybe an address, and say, I'm going to give you a warning right now, and then some way log that, and the second time, or the third time, whatever you all decide to, to bring it up in steps? We're really trying to just, it's behavior modification here is what we're after. You know, we're not trying to whack them so hard as much as we are to modify that behavior and make sure they know we're on it, we know who you are, we know where you live. Is that a possibility with minors, or doesn't that work very well?
No, absolutely it is. The one problem, if they don't have a driver's license or another ID, or if you're going to just deal with them on the spot, you're taking them at face value of who they are. So, I guess I would probably be more inclined to have the officer get in touch with the family, which I know one of our corporals did just that just the other day.
Nice.
With some kids on a golf cart, he basically followed them home and had a chat with the parents.
Perfect, perfect. Number two, and I know this is a bit of Pandora's Box here, I'm not a big golfer, I haven't touched a club in about 20 years, but I do know, we have some folks who live around the North End who enjoy just calmly, in a straight line, getting in their golf cart from home and going out to play some golf. I know what happens, I've been up visiting my mom at Good Sam, and, and that's a pretty orderly pathway that they take from their home to there. And I understand they could get in the crossfire on some of this, but we should at least have that conversation, what do we do with that? If they're doing it in a very orderly way, and, you know, watching traffic and everything else. And I understand, there again is Pandora's Box, because what does that look like? But we should at least have that conversation.
Are you asking for my opinion, or?
Well, yeah, you can lead out, and then we can all discuss it.
I may get myself in trouble with a few people, but my personal opinion, again, it's purely my personal opinion, I honestly would like to see us, and I don't even know if this is realistic, and Mr. Gallstead would be better to be able to answer that, would almost like to see it opened up, where golf carts, the ATVs, as mentioned, the ATV ordinance and UTVs could be driven by a licensed driver, and they had to follow every single code and only on city streets. You can't go out on Highway 2, you can't go out on 220, you know, very limited as to where they can be driven.
Not on sidewalks?
Not on sidewalks, exactly. And where they would have to stay as far as possible to the right, they have to obey all ordinances. I personally wouldn't have any problem with that, whether that's realistic or not, it may not, may not be. But it's, it's basically one of those, in my mind, it would be much easier to enforce, because as soon as you see somebody, well, maybe it wouldn't be easier to enforce, it eliminates some of those gray areas, like you mentioned, of the people driving to the golf course. But again, I don't, I don't know if that's even realistic, it just, in my mind, that's always been kind of a, in a way, a common sense approach to it, and, but you hold them to driving standards. If they're not, if they're not following the traffic rules, they get a citation.
To me, this is also a bit of quality of life for those folks who live, you know, not too far from there, that they can enjoy just hopping in the cart and going to play some golf, seems like a fun way to do it, if, if we can do it safe and legal and the whole thing.
And you could even go so far as to putting in requirements that they have to have turn signals, have to have lights, things like that, again, but then, and that's, and maybe that's not a road we want to go down, I'm not, that's decision-free for you folks to make.
Or they could use hand signals, right? I mean, really.
That's possibility.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with Mr. DeMers on this whole thing, that, I, I seen one of those vehicles up on the North End one day, and it had about six or seven kids in it, and I didn't think, I don't think any of them looked like they were old enough to be driving it, let alone a license. So, it is an issue, and I think that when we started this whole thing, that we knew that we probably were going to end up making some changes, very good chance of it, because, you know, as, as we, as he just said now, you know, it's kind of gotten to be free will, they kind of seem like they do what they want to do now. And I think the only way to control it is to make that penalty pretty stiff. I think one way, you know, I mean, we could have our officers stop them, but they might be busy all day long stopping these things, they got better things to do, you know? So, I think we maybe want to look at that, if it can be done, like you said, maybe Mr. Gallstead could answer that, but maybe we could make some different rules, penalties for different things on that, so.
I think they might be busy all day long for a while, but you start heading out some $500,000, $1,000,000 fines, they won't be there for very long.
Those are the types of situations that we absolutely want to be responding to, and we want people to contact us. Those are situations that are without question unsafe. And, you know, we, we absolutely encourage people to contact us on those, and, and if they, even if we don't get there on time, hopefully they know who those kids belong to, what family they come to. And our officers are more than happy to go contact those folks, and at a minimum, we have that talk with them and make them aware of what the city ordinance is, what the policies are, and, and make sure they understand that kids should not be driving out on the road in those vehicles.
Mr. Murphy?
All right. Yeah, so when, when the police department put that, that out on, on Facebook and put that press rele, release out there, I actually, I got a call from an individual who stated that it's gotten to the point where some of the kids are using this, and parents are using it as more as like, as transportation, because I, what they told me is that now with that summer camp over at the VFW arena for the hockey, that there are kids that are underage that are putting their hockey bag in the back of their, and driving the golf cart to theirs for, for that camp, and then driving it back, so their parents won't have to drop them off, and, and those kinds of things. So, so yeah, so it definitely got the attention, and it definitely brought a lot of points out there, and I think it was very, very good. In my discussion with the officers, I think, it seemed like the, that really all of them would be more than happy to take this on and, and do the extra, go the extra mile to, to pull these, I think they see it as an issue as well, and so they'd be more than happy if, with the council backing to go ahead and, and start enforcing this. The feeling that I did get from them is that they weren't really quite sure how, if for underage, underage drivers, if they could cite the parents or not. There was some debate amongst them about that, but they said, what they definitely could do was to impound the vehicle, and they said that would get, that would get the parents' attention, because it's not going to be overly cheap to get it out of impound, they're going to have, it's, it takes a while. And their thought was, is that, yeah, it would take maybe a month or two, and after they impounded some vehicles, they said that without a doubt, the word would get around that if you get caught driving, if your kids get caught driving with that, you know, this is what you're going to have to do, and this is what's going to happen, so. For additional fines, I guess, you know, I'm not sure if Ron wants to weigh in on that, or what we legally could do, but the, what I got from the police officers is they thought by impounding them, they thought that would really, they, they felt that would get the parents' attention throughout the city.
And if that could some way be reserved for repeat offenders, that'd be great, you know, maybe a, a warning, at least one, talk to mom and dad, or whatever.
They're all, they're all repeat offenders right now. They all know, so.
So, what I'm gathering is that we want to maybe bring this back for more discussion of how we can, hey, enhance the penalties, for one thing, and maybe look at the golf carts. I'm not sure about the ATVs, I think the ATVs.
I, I think this is a terrible idea. I said that about UTVs, seeing what's happening now.
Can you be more specific?
I think it's a terrible idea to even think that you're going to put golf carts on, golf carts on the street. Golf carts on the street with other vehicles, I think it's a terrible idea, I mean, all due respect, trying to differentiate between somebody driving 14 blocks and somebody driving two blocks to the, to the golf course. Any place that you typically see golf carts on streets or in closed communities that are around a golf course, if you wanted to do something for the direct neighborhood, but it just is, is a difficult proposition if you're going to try to differentiate between who's actually driving it, and if I live near the golf course or not. The, as, as the mayor, or I mean, as David indicated, the UT, or the ATVs were specifically for snow removal companies, fertilizing, different landscaping permits. The golf carts, realistically, they've got storage areas over at the golf course that I'm sure they would love to rent you a spot, there's trailering over to the golf course. You know, I know it's not as fun as driving your golf cart down the street, but what ended up happening is they'll all be on the trail system, trying to get through town, and now you're creating a, you're creating a situation where I'm putting a motorized vehicle with bikes and people on, on the trail system, it's just almost impossible to, to police. And then with UTVs, we've got that in place. Golf cart, the only reason we have a golf cart ordinance, I guess it was special use ordinances, because there was at least one disabled individual that came to the city many years ago that indicated they wanted to be able to use their golf cart on the street. And so, to be able to do that, you had to be disabled and licensed and capable, and if you didn't have a license, you had to have a doctor's permit. So, I mean, this is, I guess, my opinion, legally, it becomes very difficult to try to differentiate. Regarding higher fines, we could potentially do that, we'd have to modify our ordinance for like an administrative ordinance as opposed to just basically criminal citations. I believe right now, they're all probably misdemeanors, which is 90 days in jail, $1,000 fine, or both, if it was cited. If you were to do an administrative fine system similar to liquor licenses, so to speak, you would, you would have to name that out and, and, and modify, and modify it. Regarding whether or not the parents could be cited, if you were going to go administratively, you could potentially cite the individual that's driving it, if they shouldn't be driving it, and probably go towards the owner of the vehicle, because they're allowing it to happen. But, that's my opinion. I mean, obviously, I'll draft anything that this group would like to have, but it, it's, you're kind of seeing what's happened. It started out with Mr. Powers driving his, his UTV, and now you're seeing people on the east side of Biglin Road, crossing Biglin Road, going over the pedestrian bridge to Lincoln Golf Course. We've removed the bollards so that you can actually get through there now, we've never returned it back the last couple of things, so people, that's how people are getting back and forth, so I, I just think, I'll, I'll take your direction, but I just don't think it's a good idea to try to put golf carts on the streets.
Mr. Murphy?
Okay, thank you. Just one thing before we would end here, and I guess maybe I didn't make it overly clear, but, you know, however the council wants to move forward with any additional fines, or, you know, anything, that's all, that's one issue. But I guess the point I was trying to make is that, the feeling that I got from the officers, though, is that if, if, if there is the support of the council, or if that's the, the general direction of the council, they'd be more than happy to go out there and start enforcing what we have on the books here right now, tonight, you know, if, if the council is, is.
Well, and I think, you know, the, I'm sorry, excuse me, going to Mr., or Mayor Gander's point regarding warnings, I mean, I think that's a discretionary call by the police officers, almost in any situation, depending upon what it is, they have the discretion to give a warning. I don't think that it's probably used enough, but it's, it's a, it's a viable alternative, especially under the situation if, if it never came in contact with the individual before, they're polite, you know, all of the, all of the different things that you would expect if they were stopped by a police officer or somebody of authority, so.
And to that point, if there would be a way to ledger that, so other officers could tap into that same database and say, you know, Bob Jones, you just did this last night, what's going on? Now, now it comes up a notch.
That's fairly easily able to be kept track of in our, in our record system. I was just going to mention on a related note, as far as the ATV permits and the special use vehicle permits, to the best of my knowledge at this point in time, we have zero permits that have been issued for either of those particular ordinances.
That would be easy to enforce.
Yep.
There's not.
There's not.
UTV permits, yes, we, we have issued a number of those.
How many of those?
It's, Mr. Murphy, I have 70 something, 80, 30 something.
Yeah, is there any interest in just removing that Chapter 77, the special use permit for that? If we aren't using it, like, is there really, it sounds like it was done for an isolated...
Well, we and Megan received a phone call today about something that was interesting, whether they meet all the conditions of the ordinance or not, I'm not sure.
And would that, is there like cross-reference if you removed 77, would, is there stuff that's cross-reference to items in there, in the UTV and ATV and all that?
Probably have to expand the UTV, because a typical golf cart isn't going to meet all the requirements for UTV ordinance.
Well, but if you don't want the golf cart, like, I'm just saying, if you got rid of that special use for the golf carts, like, like, why do we have it? If we don't have anybody using it, like?
Well, we could revoke any ordinance that you want, it would be up to the council.
Is there any interest in doing that?
But didn't the chief just say that him and Megan just got a phone call regarding that ordinance?
I'm pretty sure that the request was made for a golf cart permit, so I don't believe that they would qualify for how the ordinance is currently drafted. They're, I've been thinking, making the assumption that everyone who drives a golf cart has that permit.
So, they're not disabled, or anything like that? They just want to use it like a car?
So, for simplicity, if we got rid of the golf cart entirely, like you're saying, that takes care of that problem, there's no golf carts, period.
Well, there wasn't one in the city that was for special use.
Right, there was one. But there isn't anymore, right?
I do remember the old timer that had that, and it was quite a quality of life asset for him.
Yeah.
It really was. And even if it was extremely rare, it'd be, it'd be a neat thing to be able to extend. I mean, it's clearly, it has to have the slow-moving vehicle emblem on the back and all the rest, so this would, this would not be the kids ripping around, you'd be, you'd have an easy time differentiating between this and that, I believe.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd rather see a handicapped person in one of those golf carts that you're talking about with the signal lights, blah, 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 than, than the wheelchairs.
The wheelchair.
That they're using to cross and, and going to Hugo's and coming, you know... That they're using to cross and, and going to Hugo's and coming, you know? I mean, they got power wheelchairs now that, I'll tell you what, you gotta be looking out to get, they're low, low profile, you know? So I mean, I, I don't want to take that seventy-seven off the books. It's already on there. Thank you.
Maybe else have anything? I know we, maybe take a look at what we're gonna do for fines, if you want to do that. If you want to look at something else, bring up to a, at the same time, if you want to remove something, like maybe bring it back to another work session and bring up maybe examples of what we can do for fines or.
Okay. So in the, in the meantime, am I kind of gathering that the council would be in support for the, for the PD to?
Enforce it, yes.
Perfect.
Um, could we do one more thing of homework? Mr. Murphy, before you return and whoever else you'd have to bring in, um, check for cities nearby that have legal golf course, golf cart use on their streets. Maybe there are none, but if others are doing it, what does that look like, at least for our discussion? We may, you know, out of hand, just say, no, we're not doing it. But let's just find out maybe if other cities are doing it and how they're doing it.
That's easy from the league.
Thank you.
Name else everything on that topic. If not, we'll move to adjourn. entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Who by Johnson? Second, second by reitell. One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried and adjourned.
Okay. So since, before we head out, just a reminder, one week from tonight, after the city council meeting, we have the, the quarterly visioning session.